Time for a plug, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Julie.
Mayor Moller.
Present.
Council Nash.
Here.
Council Trask.
Here.
Council Goble.
Here.
Council Gorley.
Here.
Council Coleman.
Present.
Council Gerson.
Let the record show, we have six present with one absence. Council Gerson will not be here this evening due to a personal matter. And at this time, I ask for a motion to excuse her.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The record show, six ayes with no nays on both executive session and the record of council. For recognition of visitors and hearing the petitions, we have a gentleman here this evening who'd like to speak for council. Daniel, if I come forth, I just need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Daniel D. Smith. My address is 3235 Byway 20, 97386. And I, this is the first time I've ever came to one of your meetings. I have in the past when you guys were getting set up over here. But I really don't have a whole lot of questions because I've been kind of conversant where on stuff. And I just wanted to kind of sit down and see what this was about.
Okay.
I don't know if I'll stay through the whole thing.
Well, I appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you working with the city on this, on this property adjustment.
Yeah.
So appreciate that.
Yeah, I hope everything turns out okay for public, you know.
Well, I think it's a win-win for citizens of the community and for you and everybody, so.
Me too, especially with the new house and development over here. I'm glad to see it. I'm glad to see Sweet Home growing over there.
Yeah.
That's good.
Well, again, thank you for everything and appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you very much. All part.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else would like to come before the council to be heard? Recognition of any visitors? Okay, moving on. Old business, request for council action, city of Sweet Home Fleet policy revision. Okay.
The motion for councillor.
My apologies. So I was trying to move on because this is going to be a lengthy meeting tonight.
I did check.
So we'll back up. Now, I need a motion and second for consent agenda approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, we have six ayes with one absent, approval of the consent agenda. Moving on to old business, request for council action, city of Sweet Home Fleet policy revision.
That begins on page 10 of your packet. We presented this information to you at our last meeting for information only review. I have had discussions with one of you, two of you, outside of it. I believe it's in a form that we're all okay with, but if not, we're certainly more than happy to make appropriate changes.
Any questions, councillors?
Well, Mr. Mayor, when that gentleman was on the talk with this, I was, I didn't know anything about this. But once he explained the whole system to me, I think it's definitely worth a chance to try to save the money and move forward. I mean, especially since we can get out of it at any point that we don't like it or something changes.
Are there any questions from the public, sorry, about having 18-year-olds drive?
Is that Courtney Barkin?
Any other questions, councillors? Need a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution 13 for 2020 as presented.
Second. A motion second. All in favor, everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, we have six ayes with no nays and one absent, approval of resolution number 13 for 2020.
Are you thinking about the second? Try a second here, go. Okay, thank you. You aren't.
That's councillor.
Do you have to do roll call anymore?
Should we do, well, just one, if he's, what's, what's your thoughts on this?
It might be best since there is somebody on, but I think we heard him distinctly. There's only one, right?
Is councillor, we in agreeance with, if he's, we can, councillor Nash, if he can, on all votes, be loud enough to be recognized by council?
I'll try to.
Okay.
That was good.
We'll try to do it that way. I think it'll save time tonight, I think. Moving on, request for council action, resolution number 15 for 2020, 2021 budget adoption.
This begins on page 54 of your packet. And actually, I'll turn this over to Brandon if you have any questions. As you know, you've all been involved in the budget process, various meetings with both you and the rest of the budget committee. We held a public hearing at the last meeting. We've received no comments on the budget, is my understanding. So we bring it now before you, and I'll let Brandon talk if he has anything else to add.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add to that. So this is the first of four total resolutions that the city council will have to review related to overall budget adoption. This is obviously the most important one of the group as it actually sets our budget for the 2021 fiscal year. Fiscal year. Fiscal. Total appropriations, if you'll notice on page 58, is $29,363,383. And I can certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, councillors?
I'd like to change, oh, nothing.
Have you ever seen that movie Dodgeball? Dodge a wrench? I got a pen from Brandon on that one.
If there's no questions, councillors, I'll need a council directive.
Well, Mr. Mayor, hi. Let's see, I can get my glass here. I recommend option three, adopt the resolution number 15 for 2020, adopting the budget for 2020, 2021.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second because this is a budget adoption. I'm going to go ahead and ask for roll call on this one.
Mayor Moller.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
Councillor Goble.
Yes.
Councillor Gorley.
Yes.
Councillor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Gerson.
Let the record show, we have six ayes with no nays, one absent, approval of resolution number 15 for 2020, a budget adoption of 2021.
Water utility fee review.
Okay. We had a discussion about this the last meeting as well to decide if you chose to review this or not. In a nutshell, I think we're all very, very aware of the condition of some of our infrastructure within our community, which is probably both in the water distribution and water system and wastewater collections and wastewater system. That being said, one of our big concerns is was trying to track down our water loss because we were losing 40 to 50%. Excuse me, of our water. And so, excuse me, we budgeted to try and do additional work to track down that water loss. Right around the same time, we found the silver bullet, which is being approximately 350,000 gallons a day, give or take. So is tracking that water loss down the issue that it was when you as a council agreed to these rates? And also, we certainly were not all aware of where we would be in the COVID-19 pandemic. And so being that one of the council's goals is to be responsive to the needs of the community, we thought it would be prudent to take a look again at the water rates. Last month, you did agree to, or you did make a motion and passed to put a hold on implementing the increased rate in an effort, put it in advance order so that we could discuss it and support it tonight. This is a situation in which you will, you could very well have staff members disagreeing with each other in front of you this evening. And that's okay, because we all have jobs to do. And we represent different areas and different thoughts and come from different directions. Hopefully, I'm not called Mr. Towery tonight. I hope you can still. But at the same point in time, I need the council to understand how much I appreciate what Greg does and appreciate that he is willing to have difficult discussions with me. Although they're generally not real difficult, we just kind of talk it out. So in order to be responsive to the community and to the changing scenario and situations in which we all live, we wanted to make sure council has the option to review these rates. Brandon has the water rates up there right now. Brandon has a whole presentation that he's going to give you, so I'm going to turn it over to Brandon.
Okay, I did put this slide up here for, just as kind of a reminder of where things lie currently. The current rates, if you remember, the base rate is at $19.99. That's a monthly charge regardless of water consumption. The commodity per 100 cubic feet and anything over that 300 cubic foot level is currently at $9.25. Approved rates, that base rate went to $21.70. The commodity moved to $10.28. I'm going to do my very best to remain as neutral as possible through this. My slides go back and forth, and Greg and Ray will obviously have things to interject occasionally potentially regarding parts of this presentation. On the screen is the Excel document, the table that we walked you through regarding kind of the logic behind why we needed the rates that we had asked for in the past. If you remember, there were some resources going into the water funds. Specifically, we had some carryover from the budget in 2020, some planned carryover. The sale of the Ninth Avenue property, we had talked about using for capital purposes. And then available capital water funds was currently at 275,000. We talked about the three different projects that we were planning for the 2021 fiscal year that begins in July. Those three specifically were the backwash device at the water plant. If you remember, that backwash device is supposed to help. When the system goes into backwash mode, it kind of works to make sure that we're not sucking water back completely. Kind of stabilizes the system overall out of the water plant. A variable flow device, 195,000. That device specifically tries to eliminate the pounding mechanism, so to speak, of the water hitting the system. Remember, it's either an open valve or a closed valve. There is no in-between. So this device kind of helps to moderate that and prevent the pounding in the system that can produce leaks over time, especially on weaker pipes. We talked about the Ninth Avenue two-inch main replacement. That total cost was $250,000. And then the total 2021 requested operations and maintenance budget of $2.1 million. And then a transfer of capital disaster funds of 300,000, an annual transfer that is made to, made as if and needed in a case of emergency. So all of that totaled $3.2 million. At our current rates, we were anticipating generating 2.3 million, which left us a deficit, so to speak, of almost $200,000. And that's what the rate increase was proposed to you, is to make up that difference. We've discussed internally kind of what this would look like if we were to revert the rates to, or to set the rates to their current rate. Basically, what we've done is assumed that instead of replacing that two-inch main on Ninth Avenue this year, we would postpone that a year. In this year, instead of spending $250,000 to complete that line replacement, we would spend a smaller amount to prepare for that project, engineering requirements, get all the plans set and be ready for that project to happen in the next fiscal year, essentially delaying that need. With that happening, so we drop that down to 70,000, we take the deficit down to $8,000. To make up the $8,000, we can utilize the fund balance in the water fund to cover that, which means we could leave our rates at their current $19.99 for the base and the $9.25 on the residential side for the commodity. So that, that's what we would be giving up if we were kind of leaving the rates where they're at today.
Takes away my question.
I wanted to run through a brief history of the water rates. We looked at this when we did, when we had the conversation initially. This starts with 2012 and a base rate of $17.90 and a commodity of $5.95. What you can see is for 2012, 2013, 14, and 15, that base rate stayed at $17.90 with a small increase on the commodity side. Each year that that, basically, they held that tight for two years. They left that rate and then they had to increase it. So you'll notice that that commodity jumped a little more than $1.50 in order to balance the fund each year. In 2016, that base rate went up almost $10, just under, to $26.58. So it took a big jump for kind of remaining at its current seven, at its $17.90. All that being said, if we leave the current rate where it is, we can certainly make that possible as we demonstrated. But that doesn't mitigate the potential need on the system down the road. So there's, there's a give and take in each instance. I wanted to walk through this real quick with you. This is our five-year projection for the water fund. So the fees and franchise, the fees line there is the user fees. That's what primarily, that's the primary revenue source for the water fund. This increase is about 2.5% each year in order to maintain two months' worth of fund balance. This fund has a smaller fund balance than the six months that we shoot for in the general fund and the police, the public safety levy and library levies. Reason for that is we get a monthly income in that fund. We receive water bills, we receive water payments on a monthly basis. And so we don't, we don't keep the fund balance as high, but we do keep a couple of months in case, you know, something goes catastrophically wrong. So we have a little bit of a buffer. Holding that rate steady in this current fiscal year, doable, certainly would not drain the fund balance at all. But then, in order to meet these fiscal requirements in the future, may, not saying for sure, but may require a greater increase down the road. So we could certainly mitigate and assist residents and business owners right now, given the ongoing pandemic and the folks kind of rebound from the COVID-19 situation. Revisit this in a year when we redo rates again, and it just may mean more. Or we're having to scale back kind of the work that we're doing. And I think that's what Ray was talking about, you know, given that we have found that kind of silver bullet, that 350,000 gallons per day leak, you know, is the project list that we were putting forth before you as critical? And I think that's where opinions may differ. That's all I have.
Any questions, councillors?
So, Mr. Mayor, I have, there's someone in this room probably that wants to do all those projects, I would assume. But I would really like to know, Greg, if you have a prioritized list of which you would like to do the most, which is going to be the best bang for our money? I would really like to know what you're, what you think is the most important thing that we can possibly do and not, and cut something, whether it's Ninth Avenue, whether it's the backwash, whatever it is.
Yeah, we've had, what we're presenting tonight is consensus. That's a good word, right?
Is that, that to Mr. Towery?
Yes.
Mr. Towery, okay. I think that should be a policy. We just call him Mr. Towery. Anyway, go ahead.
But I think, I think this is what we're proposing as a potential result, right? You know, our discussion from my point is that us finding that large leak does not make our 80-year-old sewage water mains. We still have that issue around. I think stabilizing the treatment plant is our first, and I said this at our training, that is our first and most. If I had to choose, that's what we need to go in and stabilize the plant, help with how the system is actually operating and reacting. Have that ability to pressurize the system as we're trying to backwash the things, not depressurize the system. So first of all, stable in it, and once we get it stable in it, it might activate. But that's kind of where I would say we go first. We have a great plan, just needs a little bit of. But after that, and I've told Ray this, that before I leave here, I want to see all these sewage water mains out here. I think the water quality people that live in the avenues, the water quality has slow issues, fire flow, water quality. We have some of the best water quality, not only in the state, but possibly in the nation. And it's been recognized. So, but what happens is once we get it into the, into the system and then it transfers into that older gallonize, which you guys have seen, that's where we're having issues. So my goal is to identify all those projects, which we have on our five-year CIP plan, which will be coming back to you guys at some point. But we need to fix these sewage drains.
So.
My priority.
Mr. Mayor, could you, Brandon, could you move that back to those projects that he wants to get done? So I realize you want to do them all.
We can't.
I know.
We can't, that's.
Yeah, so how much of an impact, how many people are going to be impacted by the $1.71 or whatever it is? Some are not going to be impacted, is that correct?
46% of our customers are at the, would experience that $1.71. Yeah.
I guess that, for me, if you can roll back that, the slide back to the year progression. We, as a council, we, our struggle was because of the economy, was what was going on. Everything that happened, as you can see, from 2012 to basically 2015, we froze. And they came back and bit us in the hind end. Okay, that's why I'm kind of on this fence, why I'd like to say the council's consensus of which direction we want to go. Because you see the major jump that we had to do just to get us back to a, and I don't really want to get into another big jump again because that, I don't think is not a wise move. With the COVID situation going on, I guess my question to the councillors is, where do we want to lean? Will we leave alone for a year? Or just go ahead and move with an increase, knowing that we have to slowly keep moving forward even during the circumstance?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the leak that we had on Ninth, that they took care of for the time, it's a bandaid, but we don't have any idea. If we knew how much of an impact that was going to be on the, on the use of our water at 300,000 or whatever it was a month, we don't know what that impact's going to be, but it should be nice if we did. Unfortunately, we don't. And I agree, I, these, I was there when that big race came. It's painful.
Well, it was bigger on the sewer side, if you recall.
Yeah, it was painful, but it was something that, it, it was something I don't think we could avoid.
So councillor Coleman and councillor Goble, what's your thoughts on?
I think I was in on this resolution, so I would choose to revert back to striking that resolution just because of COVID. I know that we need to stay progressive and stay on top of it, but I know, not just with COVID, but also with this water leak being resolved, knowing how that impacts us, I think we'll come back to it as more educated on how best to move forward. So that's my thoughts.
True thoughts.
2012, 2015, my personal opinion on that has always been that it was held off for too long. And right now, the way I see it, I like what Brandon said. That's kind of where I was going originally, is that we don't do the Ninth Avenue, we move the money over to cover, and we hold the rates the way they are for right now. And when, then we look at it later, so we can always look at this later. And the Ninth Avenue, I know it needs to get done, but it's working, it's holding. If it pops or anything goes wrong with it, we're going to transfer money and funds around to fix it anyways. So that's, that's the way I see it. It'll go the wrong way.
What's your thoughts?
I think there's some really good projects on the table. I, we get those done, we can be really proud that those have been accomplished and set our sights for the next. But right now, our community needs to be very conservative with what we're doing here. And I think we need to remove that resolution.
I'm kind of in agreeance based on what, I'm kind of on the fence, but I think we'll move back to the, I think we have a consensus to move it back to. Councillor Nash, I'm sorry. What's your thoughts?
I know it's never fun trying to raise up the money and all that stuff, but even saving the money that we're losing on that major leak down on Ninth, you know, we already had $188,000 in the hole. You know, that would help get us up to where we needed to be most likely, but with that being fixed and other small leaks probably popping up all over the system, you know, I mean, if we leave the rates like we approved them to do up to the 2170, at least we would have some money coming in to be able to fix up any other major issues that could arise instead of going, oh, man, you know, we should have kept that little bit of raise on the water rates, so, because now we got another $400,000 project that popped up because we blew another line, you know? I mean, it's always nice to have a little bit of backup, you know, but you know, I just, I think we should keep them raised up just that little bit, and then we can revisit it next year and see where we're sitting on funds, just in case something does happen. You know, cancel the ninth one like James was saying, you know, get the other stuff fixed, and hopefully we're still ahead of everything. If something else happens, it's bad.
Well, you know, Mr. Mayor, this kind of reminds me of the marijuana money for one and then the levy money that we decided to keep in the levy for the police, and I have no problem with that, none at all. But we budgeted for that buck 71, and so the next time around, are we going to be at $4? I don't know. I don't know.
That's why I was saying I'm on that fence. I'd hate to have to have a big jump again. But I have to agree with councillor Coleman and councillor Goble, I think. But I have to agree with Council Coleman and Council Goble, I think.
Yeah.
COVID situation, I think, I liked option number three that was presented.
Well, as you know, I'm about as conservative as anybody on this, on this thing, but I tell you, this is going to be a tough one.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's good, though, that we can still put some money aside to get ready for the Two Inch Main on Ninth, that we're not just eliminating all parts of that, that we actually can be prepared for when it comes, so.
Well, I think the Two Inch Main is, is a priority, there's no question. There's no question.
So I think with option three, we still have that availability to prepare, so.
Yeah, we've established that with the current funds, we could at least get started with the planning and the mapping and prepare in the event of some kind of catastrophic issue on that line, because that line does have 30-plus patches. Then we would, we would just need to revisit, we just need to come back, which is not.
So, Mr. Mayor, so Brandon, if, if, if after the first of the year, past election and all that stuff, and this COVID thing kind of gets squared away, and we're not broke or in bankruptcy, is, can we redo this? Like, is that what you just said? We can go back in January and revisit this and say, you know what, at this point, maybe we could go back to the original plan and, and maybe not get all the stuff that you need on Ninth Avenue, but, because I could work with that.
Sure. First of all, if we hit bankruptcy, then you should probably let me go, because I didn't do my job well. But if you, if you get to the point where, you know, you, things look better, the economy's doing better, business is booming again, yeah, you could certainly revisit the resolution and bring it back. My only statement there would be that we built the budget and that project based on beginning the collection of those funds in July 1, and so we have some ground lost. We could potentially do a little bit more beyond the planning, but too far past the planning, and you're into the project, and it doesn't make sense to, to do a whole lot. So we would probably be kind of stockpiling that for that project, and then, you know, that would potentially help reduce what we would need to ask for later.
Well, even with the COVID situation, I still see some pretty decent growth on the horizon as we hone, and I think that's a positive thing, and in a lot of ways, so.
I don't know if you've noticed, Mr. Sedman's raised his hand a couple times.
Yeah, I'm sitting, I'm sorry. That's okay. I think this is a good opportunity, too, for us to kind of mirror what we did with the wastewater plant, right? Maybe we take this $70,000, if that's a decision you want to make, and let's look at all of our two-inch lines. Let's get them on some sort of schematic, or at least get them in a rough plan, again, and I'll use Mr. Towery, to work for us at the state like we did on the wastewater side, because it's election year, there's going to be possibly funds released and other grant monies. I think we'd be to our advantage to take advantage of those. I mean, that really helped us out on the wastewater side, and I think it helped us out on the distribution side, so.
Mr. Mayor, Greg, have you ran this by the number two?
Yeah, we were talking about it.
Okay.
Well, sorry, Greg, I didn't, I can't see behind Mr. Snyder's, but it's kind of the, apparently you had your hand raised, but I didn't see it. Sorry.
That's because they're not social distancing oriented.
Social distancing, oh, there.
I think those two are violating that.
Anyway.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, this is not really a.
Is it?
It is, so there is.
You said review, it's not really a council action, that's why I'm questioning.
Well, there were some proposed actions in the, in the options for the RCA, because if we, if we want to remove, if you want to keep it, then we want to reimpose it, if we want to remove it, then you'll have to move to strike it. So we do need to cancel action if something.
Okay, so.
If you want to make the change, if you want to leave it how it is, then you just move on. Next item on the agenda.
They, they, they've frozen the rates right now.
They did for a month.
Or is it just for a month?
And there's nothing that precludes us from looking at this again?
Absolutely.
Nothing stopped us from doing that, so we do need to put it back the way it was.
There would need to be action if you want to rescind it. If you do not take any action, then the next month would be under the rate from resolution number seven.
So, you ready? Okay. I'd like to move to strike resolution number seven for 2020 and return the water rates to the 2019 figures.
Motion, and a second by Council Goble. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Let the record show, we have five ayes, one nay, and one absent to move to strike resolution number seven for 2020, return the water rates to 2019 figures.
You're welcome, Brandon. Thank you.
At this time, we will move to a public hearing at 7:05. Open a public hearing for USDA rural development grant application. At this time, I'm going to ask if there's any declarations of members of the council of any biased conflict of interest or any ex parte communications.
No.
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 Council Nash?
No.
Okay, we have six nos, no council bias, and nothing. Moving on to staff report.
I'm going to turn this over to Chief. So did you have some of the funds there?
I think you were bringing this back on the agenda. In April, we had brought forth information from council on the USDA rural development grant that one of our officers had applied for. If you remember, the grant was for partial funding for a new K-9 patrol vehicle, seven ballistic vest carriers, and seven ballistic shields. The total project, or the total cost of the project was just over slightly over $59,000, and the USDA rural grant, if approved, would cover 35% of that, so just over $20,000. In April, we had brought forth the information and council approved resolution number six for 2020, which authorized staff to submit the application for the USDA rural development grant. Once that was submitted, the next step in the, the grant process is to have a public hearing on that grant to allow input from the public forum. So to me, it seems kind of backwards, but that's the requirement of the grant, and so that's why we're before council to elicit any public input on the proposed project.
Thank you, Jeff. At this time, I will open the floor for public comment. Those who testify must be recognized by the mayor, be on microphone, and state their full name and address for the record. No one shall be disorderly, disruptive, or abusive during the hearing. Testimony must be relevant, and redundancy and repetition to be avoided. This time, open for public hearing, comment. Any on, in, okay. Okay, no additional public comment. This time at 7:07, I will close the public hearing. Any further discussion by council? Moving on for new business, request for council action, residents number 16 for 2020, 2020, 21, declaration of election of state revenue sharing funds.
I'll turn it over to Brandon.
This is the second resolution related to the budget adoption process. You'll remember from our conversations at both Budget Committee and Public Hearing for the Budget, improved budgets at the last council meeting, the state revenue sharing funds are those funds that the state collects from taxes charged on liquor sales, cigarettes, marijuana, and I feel like I'm missing one. That might be it. And then they also just are kind enough to share some general revenue from their coffers. In order to, for the city of Sweet Home to be eligible to receive those funds, we have to pass this resolution to declare our election of those funds, and then a subsequent resolution to certify that we provide a certain level of service, but we'll get to that.
Please, the council?
Yeah, I have a question. I want to back it up, just to where we were in, in that public hearing. Were we supposed to make a motion like it says right there in that thing that I read? Because it says the word motion, that's why I ask.
Where is that?
Page 193, recommendation. Since hold a public meeting to allow the public an option, opportunity to comment on the USDA rural development grant application and make a motion.
Yeah, you could motion, yes, you could.
Yeah, it just says if, on my notes to say if we wanted any decisions, but ask for request of council, we can.
You have, you've already approved it.
That's what I thought we did.
It's confusing on my part.
That's what I thought, we already approved it, it was just for public.
Right, but I, I was reading that, and that's what I was waiting for, I just, because it said the word, I wanted to.
It is confusing, because we'd already approved it, and that's.
I apologize, my fault. Sorry to back it up.
No, no, I just, it's understandable, because it is a little confusing, but.
I will add the, the declaration, the state revenue sharing funds, so, for the information in your request for council action document, we received $483,376 planned for the 2021 fiscal year in state revenue sharing funds, so that's what we're making a decision on now.
Okay. Any other questions, councilors? Need a council directive?
Mr. Mayor, I moved to adopt resolution number 16 for 2020.
Second. Motion second, since it's part of the budget, I am going to have request for roll call on this one.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Tross?
Yes.
Council Goble?
Yes.
Council Gorley?
Yes.
Council Coleman?
Yes.
Council Gerson? Mayor Muller?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Let the record show, we have six ayes and no nays, approval of resolution number 16 for 2020. Request for council action, residents number 17 for 2020.
Again, Director, you spoke of the need to certify that we meet certain criteria, and we offer so many, I mean, the five, four, excuse me, services as a city. Brandon, has anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, the declaration before covered our, covered us for RRS 221.770. This resolution is required in RRS 221.760. I don't know why it comes before, but it does. But what we're doing is certifying that we provide four or more services in the list of the resolution, in section one, you can see them there, and so adoption of this resolution demonstrates that we provide police protection within our city limits, street construction, maintenance and lighting, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, planning, zoning, and subdivision control, and one or more utility services.
Any questions, councilors? Okay, need a council directive?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 17 for 2020.
Second.
Motion second, again by roll call, please.
Council Tross?
Yes.
Council Goble?
Yes.
Council Gorley?
Yes.
Council Coleman?
Yes.
Council Gerson? Mayor Muller?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Let the record show, we have six ayes and no nays, approval of resolution number 17 for 2020. Request for council action, resolution number 18 for 2020.
Similar scenario, I'll turn it over to Brandon.
I think this is the last one I get to bring to you. So in the past, the distribution of marijuana funds used to be handled by the Department of Revenue, who does the collection. This year, that process is changing, it'll now be distributed by the Department of Administrative Services at the state of Oregon, and they have required that we certify that we allow for the use and sale of marijuana inside Sweet Home City limits. We used to have to quarterly sign this certification with the Department of Revenue, we only have to do this once through this resolution, but this is a new, a new one for this fiscal year, so. Here it is.
Questions, councilors? Okay, council directive.
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, by roll call again, please.
Council Goble?
Yes.
Council Gorley?
Yes.
Council Coleman?
Yes.
Council Gerson? Mayor Muller?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yeah.
Council Tross?
Yes. Let the record show, we have six ayes and no nays, one absent, approval of resolution number 18 for 2020. Next request for council action, resolution number 19 for 2020.
This begins on page 242 of your packet, and I'll just turn it over to Lev.
Yes, okay, so Mr. Smith was here earlier, this is the item he was referring to, so you're probably aware, our neighbor, he is our neighbor to the east. Before we brought, we bought this property, there was the existing driveway that encroached upon this property, so the city kind of bought a problem along with the property, and that was how to resolve the neighbor's encroachment. At the same time, we have this vacant land next to City Hall, and it's been discussed in the past, the possibility of putting a small park there, given the lack of park amenities in this part of the city. One of the proposals that was made before I arrived here was to essentially offer the property owner next door a slot to allow him to retain his driveway, and in exchange, he would give us a strip of property on the south side of his property, which would give us access to pedestrian path in the neighborhood to the, to the east. And so this, this request for council action is essentially formalizing that. We've made a verbal agreement with Mr. Smith on the amount of property that he would be giving up in exchange for being allowed to retain his driveway, and then in the future, it doesn't commit us to immediately take, you know, put in a park or anything. Essentially, this would go into effect when we develop the park, and we would put a path in to give people access to that park, pedestrian access from the neighborhood. This has been a long time, mostly because we were not aware of the process we were required to go through when it comes to state regulations. We were required by law to have an appraisal of the property. That appraisal is done, and we have appraisal report, which we should have, that essentially says that the two pieces of property are equal in value. That cost of that appraisal is evenly split between Mr. Smith and the city. The only remaining cost is the survey and recording fees. Mr. Smith has indicated that he is unable to pay more than $500 toward that purpose, which would leave the city paying $1,500 for that purpose. In addition, there are likely, Mr. Smith likely has some bank fees with his mortgage holder to get this approved by them, and so this, he would be responsible for those, and this agreement is contingent on his, his mortgage holder's agreement. So in a nutshell, that's what it is. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Any questions, councilors?
I have none.
I think it's a good, I think, in my opinion, it's a good deal for the city overall, so. Any questions, Council Nash?
None here.
Okay, need a council directive?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the motion, was it resolution?
Number 19.
19 for 2020.
A second to that.
A motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Let the record show, we have six ayes with no nays, and one absent, approval of resolution number 19 for 2020. Next up, request for council action, removal of city easement on private property at 1502 Main.
I'd like to, Blair, go with this one as well.
Okay, this property in question is right next to Safeway, in that same shopping center. There is a, on the recorded maps of the parcel, there is a indication that he has an easement across it. We actually have, I think, several easements across it, but there's one of those easements that's not actually in place, it's more of a note that appears to have been put there by mistake, and we don't need it as an easement, and so it's hindering redevelopment of the property, because if you have an easement of that kind, you can't put a structure And so, it's hindering redevelopment of the property, because if you have an easement of that kind, you can't put a structure over. Wouldn't be able to move forward, so. This request for council action is to authorize us to, um, do the paperwork essentially to remove that easement, uh, so that development could move forward.
Blair, is it on the map, is it the, the pink one or the blue one, or what, what, explain that, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm going to say yes on this, but I, is that one of the easements that the? Okay, it is, it is, I see it, never mind.
It's the yellow one. Two eighty-seven, page two eighty-seven, it's the, it's the yellow one on mine anyway.
Okay, I'm good.
You got it?
I'm, I'm good.
Any questions, councilors? Counselor Nash, any questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I make motion as recommended.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Direct show, we have six eyes with no nays, with one absent approval of removal of the city easement on a private property at fifteen oh-two Main. Request for council action, Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments I G A for Technology Services.
In a pinch, we are able to reach out to the, to the COGS I D Department for help. We've brought this before you, I think this is the third time that I've brought it before you since I've been here, we have not utilized their services at all. It simply outlines what those costs would be if we need them. This, this goes back to when the city was hit with ransomware several years ago. And, um, and the COG came in and helped, uh, helped us get through that. Uh, all, again, there's no obligation, it doesn't cost us any money unless we use it. It just outlines what those expenses would be if we were to utilize them.
Any questions, councilors? Okay, council directive.
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On the record show, we have six eyes with no nays, with one absent approval of the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments I G A for Technology Services. Request for council action, CARES Act Funding and Grant Agreement.
Again, we applied for CARES money, uh, with FEMA. We got everything we asked for, so this is basically, I want to call it free money, but kind of free money. So we just need your approval to accept the funds.
And I just, just with that, it's with the state of Oregon, this, this grant agreement is with the state of Oregon. They're the ones that are issuing the, the CARES money, which they receive from events.
Any questions, councilors? Council directive.
Make a motion that we accept option two.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? On the record show, we have six eyes with no nays, with one absent approval of CARES Act money and the grant agreement. Moving on to ordinance bill, nothing on the first reading. Second reading, ordinance number seven for 2020, water systems in critically affected chemical area, by Title only.
The only, uh, update we had was in the third paragraph, we added an S to the standards of where it's the state standard. It was in, already in the track edition, but didn't get on this one. So, um, ordinance bill number seven for, uh, twenty twenty, ordinance number, an ordinance amending, uh, Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter thirteen point two, uh, zero, that pertains to connection to water system in critically affected chemical area.
Any questions, councilors? Need a council directive to move this forward on third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The direct show, we have six eyes with no nays, with one absent, moving ordinance number seven for twenty twenty forward to July fourteenth meeting for third and final reading. Third reading of ordinance bills, uh, ordinance number nine for twenty twenty by Title only.
Ordinance bill number, uh, nine for twenty twenty, ordinance number, uh, one-two-eight-eight, ordinance submitting the official zoning map.
Okay, any questions, councilors? Okay, need council directive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, by roll call, please.
Counselor Goble.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson. Mayor Muller.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yeah.
Counselor Tross.
Yes.
On the record show, we have six eyes with no nays, with one absent approval of no, ordinance number nine for twenty twenty. Reports of committees, anybody who would like to bring forth anything for their committees?
We're going to have a parks meeting this month. Yeah. Pretty cool. And next Monday, we're going to be putting up playground equipment. So that is pretty significant. So, anybody that wants to come and help, put nuts and bolts on, they'd be welcome. No? Just, just, just those guys, not me.
Reliability, I think, I think there's a, there's a no. Um, anything else, those committees?
No.
Nothing. Moving on, reports to city officials, I have nothing to report, just, it's going to be warm this week, I just, city public works officials, everybody, just keep in mind of that, and keep hydrated, and watch yourself closely. City manager report.
Uh, big thing we want to talk about is, again, with Blair here, last week, we discussed an economic development workshop. We asked if you could review your calendar, and come prepared to set the date with us for that. Blair's put together a little bit of a list of things for your.
Thanks.
Pleasure. At least a couple of things for discussion related to that. If there's things you'd like to have added, please let us know. Uh, I would point out that, it's a very lengthy list. So unfortunately, I think it's going to be, it could be a couple of hours potentially to have these discussions. And again, if there's something we're missing related to economic development, I'd like to discuss, but Blair know it, we'll add it to the list.
I apologize for the small print, for the not having this in your packets, but we can send out an electronic copy of this as well, if you think you're free to read. Some ideas that we've tossed around, and, and kind of contemplated, some of them are, are already in the works. But they're there just because they have a, they're something, it's an ongoing project that has an economic development component, like the commercial exterior improvement program, uh, and, uh, our development code update, like that. So, this is by no means an exhaustive list, it's not set in stone. And as you can tell from the anticipated cost column, there's some pretty large numbers here, some pretty big numbers. A lot of, a lot of variability here, but the important thing is to kind of get an idea of what are, what are the priorities that you as a council have, because a lot of these things can be accomplished if we have the political will, if we have the, we put the effort into finding the funding and the financial funding. So, there's, there's tons of potential, it's just, we can't, we can't put all our, our eggs in every basket, we need to, we need to focus a bit. Because otherwise, we'll. But, uh, yeah, we'd love to schedule something to sit down and talk about these things. In, in the meantime, also, I'd love to hear if there's anything that you think should be added to this list, or any questions that you already know you have about these items, I'd like to hear about that beforehand, so that I can make sure I can meet your needs and answer your questions.
Any questions, councilors? Very good, Blair. Department directors reports, needing.
Can we look at a date?
Okay.
Is that, that's okay for recandus?
One date. What works for councilors?
Tuesdays are good.
I'm, you know, I'm fairly open to anything, so.
Tuesdays work for me, so.
Uh, so next Tuesday's the thirtieth. That's going to hate me here, because the way July falls, we actually got a free week, where we don't have to do a packet. But we could do it that week, certainly, uh, we could also be on the seventh.
Yeah, Brandon, pull up a ca, pull up a calendar for me, will you?
I'll be gone soon.
Okay.
If you don't have to put a packet together, it might be a better week, so it's not so much stress.
The week of the twenty-ninth through the third is, is our free week. That makes it pretty busy, guy, you just got to pick the right day, you know, right?
I'm available other nights as well after this week. Monday would work.
Brandon?
Brandon, sometime tonight.
I'm trying to take my calendar off of the screen, I just want to see all my stuff, it's not all that exciting.
Well, that really helps, I can, I can't read any of that.
Very colorful.
Yeah.
It's going to get worse, I hit the wrong button.
Again. Yeah, that wor, that's even better, yeah. That's, that's really good.
Can you enlarge?
He's the we.
I fixed this. Then you can have it. Ah, there we go. All right. It won't take my calendar away, so you're stuck with looking at my awesome calendar.
I'm going to put it on the city council calendar.
Oh, that would have been an option.
He needs to take you to lunch.
This is June.
You say you don't have anything going on the twenty-ninth through the third or something?
Yeah.
It's an ideal staff vacation week. Because we, the way the calendar falls.
The, the third is a paid holiday, so we won't be.
So it's a free week, and we have a holiday on Friday. Just throwing that out there.
And then until July, this is what you get, so council is here and here.
So, you're not, how about the sixth?
I'll be on that whole week.
Which week?
The sixth through the eleventh.
So we're looking at Ju- July sixth through something.
Yeah, that would be great.
I really don't care what night it is.
Are you gone? You did the twenty-first, because it's out later.
The what?
You're going to be gone the week of the sixth?
I'm hoping to be gone during the week of the twenty-ninth through the fourth. We don't have to prep a council package, there's no.
How much time do you think you need, Blair?
Depends on how, uh, talkative you are, I suppose. What's on this sheet is essentially what I, what I'm working with at this point. And there's certainly plenty to talk about. My, my goal mainly is just to get an idea of what to focus on. So, I think that can be accomplished within, at the most, a couple hours.
So could we do it before our council meeting, on the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, so we don't have to bring people together multiple times?
Well, that means we'll have to be here, you, you mean on a council night?
Yeah. I know.
So we'll have to be here at four-thirty.
You'll have to bring cookies.
Buy dinner.
Yeah, five o'clock.
I'm afraid that'd be a violation of Oregon State ethics laws. I buy dinner.
There's nobody here who's got a credible witness, so what's it do?
Uh, well, I think we should probably have something to eat that night. You can take that out of Greg's account, he's got, he gets the big money. I wouldn't, that'd be fine with me, I don't care what day it is. But you probably want it done as soon as you can, kind of.
Well, I'm, I'm not in a hurry either, because I've got plenty to do.
He's not on vacation before then.
I tell you.
Either next Monday or next, or next Tuesday.
But you said you don't want people working that week.
Well, I will be here at least Thursday. For remainder of staff, it's just nice, nice to keep them.
It prohibits us that they use the vacation time when it's convenient.
Yeah.
Don't you have some control on that? The vacation time that they get?
No.
Well, you can stop.
No, we're not talking.
That man right there. Yeah, but not the staff.
I'm good with a couple hours before the fourteenth of July.
I have two, I'm fine with that, too.
So on July fourteenth?
Shoot for an hour on the fourteenth and an hour on the twenty. He's trying to get out of dinner.
Yeah.
That works. I'm okay with that.
Me too.
That's fine.
Counselor Nash?
Counselor Nash?
Whenever.
Glad you're open.
So, let's just plan on that, then.
Fourteenth and twenty-eighth, then, Arnhem, before.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll look out and get through it all on the fourteenth. It could happen. Even better.
Okay.
Let's say we'll each bring our own piece of duct tape.
Anything else for department directors?
Uh, if I may, I have finance graphs that I want to go through, just because.
Sounds good.
From here.
Oh, my gosh.
He asked me to, I'm so sorry.
Why do you?
Um, so you've seen these graphs before, so, uh, since we are right near the end of the fiscal year, I just wanted to show you, walk through these real quick. Revenues are on target, you can see that we, uh, clearly had a spike, uh, that is greater than what we've experienced in the last five years. And in November, that's property tax season, so good news there, certainly. Um, and on the rest of the year, the, the revenues have held pretty steady. Expenses by month certainly is a different graph, uh, you can see that we've been spending more money. Uh, a lot of that extra expenditure is due to the wastewater treatment project and Sankey Park. Just as we kind of go through both of those projects in tandem, so it take up a lot of, a lot of time and check writing, so. But, all budgeted expenditures, certainly. I created a new graph for you.
Oh, thank you.
You're so welcome, Dave, or Counselor Craig. So, the red bars in this graph represent the year-to-date expenditures, so down across the bottom, you'll notice each month. And the blue is the, is the year-to-date revenues. You can see that in the first, uh, couple of months, our expenditures are, are down below our revenue numbers, but then we, that's, starting in September, we start to outpace in the expenditures, and that's just because a lot of our funds, as you know, come in with property tax season. After that, starting November, you see that the revenues definitely outpace the expenditures, so as we get into the, at the end of May there, our revenue generation is still higher than our expenditures, which is just the way we like to see it. I will caution the, in future fiscal years, especially probably next year and the, and the fiscal year after, that will likely flip-flop, because we're going to start spending a lot of money on the wastewater treatment project, so you're going to see expenditures outpace revenues rather significantly, so. Don't be too afraid of that, I guess. The last graph I created for you, it's just on a roll, I guess, it gives you kind of an idea of what expenditures look like, um, when compared to revenues. So the, the red line there across the top is, is last fiscal year, um, kind of the historical trend. You can see that, uh, and again, we had the same conversation in September and October, our, our expenses really. Uh, you can see that, uh, and again, we had the same conversation in September and October, our, our expenses really spiked and kind of uh, jumped the revenue lines, that black line there in the middle is that hundred percent, that's kind of where you would expect to be if you weren't exceeding your revenues. Uh, but for this fiscal year, we're, uh, you can see the graph pretty much follows exactly the same. Um, other than this fiscal year, July and August, we're actually less on the expenditure side um, than revenues, which isn't the case for the prior years, so. All in all, we've had a really good fiscal year, uh, our budgets are tight right now, um, which is exactly where we want them to be. If we've done our jobs right, the budget officer and I, then, uh, we get to the end of the year and there's not a lot of money left over, so. Uh, in a lot of our capital funds, in some places where we've had to put off projects, um, you will certainly see when we do a fiscal year end report that there, that there's leftover money there, um, we've talked about that during the year. And certainly under, under current spending freeze, then, you know, we're kind of holding back on some things, but we're right in line with where we anticipate needing to be for, for completing our budget year. In seven days, you can wish us all a happy new year. This will roll into the new fiscal year and full gates will open once again. So I just wanted to walk you through all that, if you have questions, I can answer them, but we're doing pretty good.
Any questions, councilors?
I just have a comment, I think, I think what you've, what you've done, what we're doing, will probably set us at a better station after this kind of goes away, I think that's a good idea.
Do have a question for, uh, our police chief Jeff, just as a, just as kind of an update, I'm understanding that there's gonna be a gathering showing support of officers tomorrow. I understand.
And that was, um, actually some, uh, within the community had, uh, chosen to put that on, uh, by themselves, actually, they initiated that, and it, uh, it's tomorrow, nineteen hundred block of Main Street, I believe, is where they'll, uh, meet gathering. And time framed, does it create all the exact time? Six, six something people would grab that. So it's a very nice, uh, gesture of support from, from those within our community towards law enforcement.
I think I can speak on behalf of the council, we have, you have full support of the council.
I appreciate that. I'll pass that on, thank you.
And, uh, just real quick, is there anything, I mean, with the craziness of this world going on, is there anything hitting us locally that's happened that we're not aware of, or?
Nothing locally at this point, um, and, uh, but I would, uh, uh, direct you to some of, uh, what's in my report as far as sessions that are being hosted by the Department of Public Safety and Standards Training. Um, they'll have those three sessions that will really walk through where Oregon stands as far as their certification, decertification process for officers, as far as their overall training associated with, um, uh, police officers in general, and then also, uh, a session on youth support, what youth support looks like in, in Oregon. I'd encourage you all to attend it, because that really was so much of the, um, the discussion, you know, associated with George Floyd's death as brought amongst the, uh, the country is, is, uh, not the country, but also the state, so I'm hoping that DPSST, they chose to try to offer this as information as far as where Oregon stands. I encourage you, everyone, to, uh, to, uh, tune in, uh, there'll be the live session, but then they're also gonna be recorded, so we can watch it later. Um, there's a session for, uh, local elected officials, but also a session for just, um, community members in general.
Appreciate Jeff, I want to say, and on behalf of council, I hope the officers stay safe.
I appreciate it, I'll pass it on.
Mr. Ray, I've got a question, I, I got a comment, now, uh, Officer McDonald has a fundraiser coming up, is that what I heard? For the, for the K nine thing, is that her name? I can't remember.
Yes, Sasha McDonald, she's the K nine officer.
Yeah.
We have, uh, the, what typically happens, our fundraiser with COVID has been put off.
Yes, yeah, I, I read that. So it's gonna come back sometime, and somebody gave some money, I heard.
Oh, yes.
I saw.
So we still have, uh, again, a lot of community support for our K nine program, which we're very appreciative. And, uh, we're looking for other, uh, ways to really build that, that support. And not just with the K nine program, but the neighborhood watches, um, uh, but we just get back out there, uh, be part of the community.
So if somebody wants to make a donation, they can give it to the you guys, or will you give it straight here, or how, how does that work?
Either way, it would work, just earmark it for whatever your, so choosing to donate to work this for the kids programs, for the K nine, uh, program, anything.
Okay, yeah. I'd like to see us get on board with that, for sure, so, anyway, I'm done.
Thank you, Jeff.
Sorry, I also want to say thank you to Chief Lynn, he came to our neighborhood watch meeting last week and appreciated that, and Sean Morgan being there, too, it was a good meeting, so.
Cool. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, there's nothing else to be brought up in council business, good one?
I got good order.
That's what I said.
I just, okay, I, uh, I just wanna throw it out there that I am not thrilled that the fireworks is canceled because of the, the COVID thing, I think we really, as community, really needed that boost. And, uh, I wanna know if there's anything that the city can do to maybe help fire that back up? Because I know other communities are going to start falling through their fireworks things and they're talking about staying in cars.
Yeah.
Where you can.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but, because this was a discussion of the fire department, because the fire department brought it on. We're not able to get our permits, it's more of a red tape matter?
I, I, I do not have an answer for that, I will check that out and get. Have to deal with the state fire marshal, you have to deal with the county for shutting down the roads, and and then, of course, the, the cost of the fireworks, which we've been blessed to be able to get enough money to do that every year. I agree with you, it's really a good thing for the community. Right now, with the way things were going, we could never get that done before the, the, the second weekend in, in July, we could maybe put it off and do something at a later date, but that, that is something that we can, we could research and figure out if we could do it later.
We could down the road, yes.
Yeah.
But my understanding is we made all the effort moving forward to get it done, but we could not get response back from the state and could not get the, jump through the hurdles and.
Yeah. And accomplish.
It's a pain.
Okay, I just wanted, um, I know, we got a lot of people in the community to feel the same way, so, not to make the chief pass out, but we've seen that, you know, we don't need permits for a lot of stuff in Oregon right now. Gather out there and.
Is that one of those, don't ask for permission, ask for?
Forgiveness?
Forgiveness, yeah, yeah.
No, in our case, we definitely have to have some permits and some approvals.
Well, the funny part about that is, it's not a funny deal, but when we have the fireworks, if the state fire marshal comes to the event and somebody's shooting off those little things out of their, they can shut that show down and be done at that point. So if, if we have, and we have trouble with it every year, it seems like, they'll be shooting off those little bottle rockets and stuff, and it's illegal, you can't do that. And, and if he was there, or she was there, and, and they said, you know, it's gotta stop, if it doesn't stop, they can go over there and say, you're done. And you're done, you come, you might only have done three of them. So it's, it's really, and it, and it should be that way, because people get hurt and all that kind of stuff, but, anyway. It wasn't because they didn't want to do it, let's put it that way.
Okay. Yeah, if they, if city, the community wanted to still proceed forward this year, they would have to get started now and see if they can get the state to jump on the bandwagon and get all the stuff moving forward on it. Right now, we got shut down, so.
So it's not, it's not something the city can help?
No, strictly the fire. Yeah, yeah, it was.
That answers the question, they had to get out there.
Yeah, no, it was a bummer, but, eh, there was a little more red tape starting in that manner.
Any else? Council business, good as order. Well, yes, I think I'm really happy that we do not have any statues in our city because, except for those two out there, because, you know, never mind, I'm, I'm done.
If I may, I, I need to check out council tablets real fast before he leaves, except for yours. We're, we're looking for one, one is missing from the network, and we're not sure which one it is, so we're trying to find it.
Anything else? If not, we will go ahead and adjourn at seven fifty.
Yeah, I was asked.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Throw it out there on the record.
Yeah, no, no, and then the next, yeah.
Three minute, forty-five minute discussion.
At Fire and all that, it was.
I mean, they raised the money.
We're a lot of people not happy about it.
And it was just.
Get the same stuff.
You know that.
Everybody talking about states and social diss things, we can shut the whole damn road down. I mean, the damn road, not the damn road.
They were tied into it.
And we can bubble off all these areas, keep them in their cars, don't care about the people in boats, they have more freedom to do stuff out there, but.
So my city's right there.
Okay.
But if we don't have one this year, we really need to bring back what we used to do for next year. Because, uh, every year, we fiddle down a little bit more, a bit more.
Well, the thing for us is next year, next year, if they, if they, we get the same, but we, we don't have the fundraiser thing. Because the, the jamboree's not working, so we won't make seven, eight thousand dollars out of that thing, however many it is. And so, and then we have the ANW thing, which we, they, they give us a bunch of money there, too.
It's been the day.
So it.
How much is, how much does it normally cost?
I, I'm thinking it's, that's total about seven thousand bucks, seven thousand dollars, yeah.
Under ten grand. So if, say, we did a donation, we got a donation for ten grand, we have a nice fireworks.
So, you know, it's not like, you know, you don't have any.
I'm not over there.
Well, it could be, it could be, it could be.
Think I'd still be on better or something.
All right.
Yeah, no, it take, yeah, we.
You need this thing on?
About sixty-five hundred dollars.
It's around that.
For the fireworks, then there's hundred dollar permit for the Corps of Engineers, there's a, a hundred and some dollar permit for, um, fire marshal of state, and you have to, we gotta pay for the, um, sand.
Yeah.
I don't need the rest of yours, I found it, I found the missing link.
On the inside, it's about seven thousand bucks.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Does it have to be from that dam location, next to the dam?
Well, it's the most, it's the easiest.
Crappiest.
But it's, the thing for, the thing for us.
Location has to be approved by the state.
Yeah, and you have to be five hundred feet or something away from any person, or a thousand, or whatever it is, I can't remember what the number was.
Actually, some of them, not necessarily go off.
Yeah, I remember that one year, they were everywhere.
I tell you what we did once, you know what we used to do? We used to do it in the middle of the lake.
Yeah.
You know what happened there?
Yeah.
We burned up a guy's boat.
Yeah.
He didn't like that too much.
No, he was happy. He wasn't happy. No sense of humor.
I had posted.
I would like to have it back out of the way.
I wrote in there, don't steal my pants, and you put that back.
I was gonna steal it.
Just for me. Okay, just do Friday if you can.
Visibility of.
I'm gonna be out of town for two days, so just remind me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that, but you know how you just type in a password, yeah, text me. I have some dead time tomorrow while we're waiting for.
Friday, and we got.
Yeah, it's tomorrow, is the kickoff?
And we got one response from the state. So not enough.
Anything out of this, like, what do we, oh, they'll pass it.
Because they had to, the state had, had nothing to do with it, but that's actual special session. Come up with guidelines.
That's what we're here so far, so I haven't been able to read it or anything, but at least.
Make sure the social diss, the mask. It was more Salem than us. We didn't have the coronavirus.
All I know is shut before eight.
If we do it next year, I'll pay, I'll try to pay the seven grand if the government can give rest of the funds, we just have a big one.
All right. That's pretty penny.
Greg, you're doing a great job. Your vote was.